Okay. If I may have your attention, I would like to call the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of April 18th to order. Mr. Gates, do we have anyone who wants to make a comment? We do have a special presentation. Kevin Harper, President of our JCC.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, Chancellor Giavignini, and members of the board. I am Kevin Harper, and as of April 1st, I am the Chair of the 2019-2020 Joint Consultation Committee. And at this time, on behalf of my colleagues—oh, thank you. Thank you.[521.29][521.29](Laughter/Applause).
Another high-paying position, Kevin.
At this time, on behalf of my colleagues who make up the District Faculty Association, I'd like to recognize the outgoing Chair of the JCC, Dr. Sharia Taylor, and thank her for her mentorship, time, dedication, and service to Tarrant County College. We couldn't have asked for a better leader. She is an upcoming rock star in the world of community college education, and we will miss her leadership in the JCC. So Sharia?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm bringing tea. Thank you, Kevin. Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Giavignini, and members of the board, I'm certainly appreciative of the time that you've allotted me to just say thank you. I feel like I'm about to launch into an award ceremony speech, so please bear with me. I promise I'll get through it very quickly, and you won't have to cue any music for me to exit.[591.30][591.30](Laughter). I'm grateful to have served in faculty leadership over the last five years as a Senator, a Senate Chair, as Faculty Association President, and most importantly, as JCC Chair. Over the years I've served, I've seen the relationship between faculty and administration evolve. Thank you, Chancellor Giavignini, for welcoming me and other members of the JCC to the table. The open and truly genuine dialogue we have engaged in over the last three years has been incredible. I often joke that it's like moving from the kids' table to the adult table during Thanksgiving dinner. People are finally listening to you. As the representing body for the faculty and other positions in student services, we have the opportunity to provide input and feedback on many important factors that not only drive student success but increase our engagement and feeling of belonging at the college. You have challenged us to think about what we do, how we do it, and how our work impacts our classrooms, the college, and the larger community. Thank you, Mrs. Appleman and other members of the board, for consistently asking for the faculty voice in your decision-making. Each month, you ask tough questions before voting on anything, and oftentimes, you directly ask about the impact of faculty. Thank you. To Dr. LeBlanc, Dr. Jordan, Dr. Coppola, Dr. Blankenbaker, Dr. Madison, Dr. Fulkerson, and Dr. Morales, thank you for giving me and other members of the JCC an opportunity, not just to bring areas of concern or problems to you, but also to participate in meaningful conversation that I believe has led to great things and can only continue. To other members of the Celts, Reginald Gates, Nina Petty, Bob Pacheco, Dr. Martin McLendon, and Dr. Joe McIntosh, thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside you and for welcoming us as true members of the team. Thank you, Wendy, for constantly juggling all of our schedules to make sure we had the opportunity for our voice to be heard in monthly meetings with the Chancellor, and the same is true for members of Dr. LeBlanc's team, who make sure we meet with you and the President each and every month. I cannot leave without saying thank you to Dr. Kelly Mills, who silently works behind the scenes to ensure that we, as the JCC, are always present when called upon and reminds everyone that we really are members of the team. I hope you understand how truly grateful I am to have had the opportunity to serve faculty, but more importantly, the college. Many of you know I grew up right down the street from my campus, but it wasn't until I became a college student and came to TCC South, returning for the summer. Apparently, I've made it my goal to make up for lost time over the last eight years in connecting to all things related to TCC. And although my time on the JCC is coming to an end, I look forward to continuing the work. Thank you all.
Thank you.[767.38][767.38](Applause).
Okay. Now, I'd like to introduce you to the dedicated faculty members who make up the JCC for the 2019-2020 academic years. We have some new folks, and I'll start with the South Campus. If you could please stand up after I call your name, and afterwards, we're going to gather behind the board members and get a photo. South Campus, Robbie Scheffy, President, and Rebecca Grubbs, President-Elect. Northeast Campus, Sarah Reed, President, and Marius Pfeifer, President-Elect. Northwest Campus, Daiju Hosino, President, and Lauren McLean, President-Elect. Southeast Campus, Justin Grace, President, Michael Downs, President-Elect. Trinity River Campus, Cindy Mask, President, and Corina White, President-Elect. And the Connect Campus, Timothy Park, President, and Sheri Mata, President-Elect. Thank you very much for your service, guys.[843.32][843.32](Applause). Now, if you could follow me, we'll gather behind the board members and get a photo.
We are very grateful to all of you for the above and beyond, in addition to all that you do for our students, that you would give this extra time and talent and skill to this particular position and responsibility. We need to do that.[871.36][871.36](Laughter). We need to come close, snuggle in.
We need to skip more. Yeah? Yeah, we can go set in a little more water.
Somebody's furnishing.
Robbie, turn around.
All right, everybody look this way, get about three or four shots right here. It's farther, count three, one, two, three, throw it there. Four.
Thank you.
Thank you.[905.36][905.36](Applause).
Come visit anyway. We don't need.[908.36][908.36](Laughter). All right, I will now call for a motion to approve the—I'm sorry, Kevin.
If I could say one more thing, I forgot to mention the new JCC Chair-elect is from the Northwest Campus, and it's Daiju Hosino. So Daiju, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.[940.12][940.12](Laughter/Applause).
Thank you. And thank you, Kevin, for your work and participation. All right, I would ask for approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 21st, 2019. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any corrections, comments, additions? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any committee reports? If not, we'll start with board members' reports on activities they think are relevant to us. Dr. Morrison, you want to start?
I'll be happy to.
We have so many wonderful activities that take place daily on all of our campuses. It would be impossible for board members to make all of them, or even to be—someone to be present at every one. But I want to say to all of our faculty and staff how much we appreciate the awesome work that you do, and it is such a joy for us when we are able to be present with you. I just want to share a couple of things, actually, three things, that I've been able to participate in over the past few months. One that Ms. Appleman told me I should show up for was the North Texas Ignite. It's an organization, their theme was, you know, "Girls Rule the World." Ms. Bobby Edmonds is currently a board member for that national organization. She followed Toby Jackson as a member of that organization. The young lady in the middle is a South Campus student. She's President of the Beta Psi Club on South Campus. But it was a wonderful organization, young people, high school and college-age girls from all of North Texas participated on Trinity River Campus. So it was an awesome day.
Thank you for references.
And I did go and bring greetings. Thank you. Excuse me. Also, to—last week, we were invited to celebrate the 50th anniversary of TCC North East Campus, and I think—oh, I was derelict in taking pictures. But it was a wonderful celebration, and two very special ladies were recognized for their service. Interim President, Dr. Tahita Fulkerson, and our retiring President, Ms. Louise Appleman. So it was a great celebration on Northeast Campus, celebrating their 50th anniversary. They did a great job. And today, I will tell you that—Mrs. Christine Moss will tell you that TCC changed the trajectory of her life. Today, I was at her—the school that is named in her honor, Christine C. Moss Elementary School. Mrs. Moss is retiring after 29 years as a board member for Fort Worth ISD. She was a member of the first graduate nursing class from TCC South Campus. She went on to earn her RN, BSN, and Master's Degree in Nursing, recently retired from the state. But it was a wonderful celebration, and that school is—in Southeast Fort Worth, so it was just awesome. And I mentioned to her—I'm not sure—we have to get somebody to check the facts. She's probably one of few TCC graduates to have a school named in their honor, and she's certainly very deserving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greenhill, do you have anything to report?
I've spent a lot of time this month—I think we're almost in the middle of the legislative session, and I'm the Chair of the Community College Association of Texas Trustees. As I've told you before, our legislative appropriations have been—both houses have been passed. Community colleges—I don't want to give the details—we're doing pretty well. We're not losing money. Funding is better for our success points than it was before, but everything is up in the air. The interesting thing, this interesting matter that all of you hear about is the 2.5% cap on property taxes that you can use for—or—that we can use to spend money on. The House just passed it this week. It's kind of exciting. The difference in the House was passed last week, the difference being that in the House version, community colleges and hospitals and some other organizations are not included in the 2.5% cap. But as you know, as Diane can tell you, things are always up in the air. You never know what's going to happen. But right now, the House version, as far as we're concerned, we're not included in the 2.5% tax—that is, community college taxing districts. But in the Senate, we are. But stay tuned, it's going—it's an interesting session. It's an interesting, interesting session. That's my report.
Thank you. Dr. Patrick?
I have a report today.
Mr. Heed?
Yes, I was very fortunate to attend the Tarrant County Computer Science and Information Technology District Advisory Committee meeting on Northeast Campus this week. And it brought the—some of our advisors, about 25 or 30 of our technical advisors from industry and business, together with our faculty. And it was very interesting, we had presentations by—it was put on by Eli Mercer, our Dean of Technology, and Dr. Xena Jackson, who's here, and Dr. Bob Pacio made presentations to the group, and then presented to all of the advisory committee our certificate—description of our certificate and degree programs in technology, and then asked them to review those, and then they asked some really good questions. For example, what skills do you need that we are not now offering? What skill gaps in our program do you see that would help our students entering the workforce? How can we assist our students in making college-to-career transitions, and on and on? And so, the whole idea was to put the advisors together with the faculty to see how our program matches up. Do we have certificate programs, degree programs, that are what the industry needs? It's a way to keep up with the ever-changing technology, which, as you know, is very rapidly changing. So it was an extremely good meeting, and it's held once or twice a year, and I thought that was absolutely fantastic. So congratulations to Eli Mercer and Xena Jackson back there at the Northeast Campus. And the faculty was from all the campuses that got together, so it was a district-wide event. So it was a wonderful program.
Thank you. And finally, we owe congratulations to our culinary folks on Southeast Campus. The culinary arts instructors earned accolades for their creations, to no one's surprise, at the DFW West 2019 Fort Worth Food and Equipment Expo, sponsored by the Benny Keith Company. So Nathan Price, Chef Allison Hodges, Chef William Hodges, and Chef Katrina Warner were the folks that led the team, that got them the recognition. We'd like some samples ASAP.[1426.64][1426.64](Laughter). So congratulations to them. Please convey to them our pride in their accomplishments. All right. Moving right along to number five, the consent agenda, consideration and approval of student fees for the academic year 2020. Motion to approve. Anyone?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded. Mr. Heed. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. In the absence of our attorney, we've asked Dr. Patrick, our Assistant Secretary, to read the resolution and order appointing the presiding election judges for May the 4th.
This is an order appointing the presiding election judges. Whereas, the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees has ordered the trustee election to take place on May 4th, 2019, for a trustee to be elected from single-member District VII. And whereas, the Texas Education Code requires a board to provide by written order for the appointment of presiding election judges for each polling place in said election. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, one, that the presiding judges set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached heretofore and made a part of this order, are appointed to serve at the polling places set out in said exhibit for the Tarrant County College District trustee election called for May 4th, 2019. Number two, that each presiding judge shall appoint qualified election clerks to serve and assist in conducting said election, provided that in each instance where the presiding judge actually serves as expected, any alternate presiding judge shall be one of such clerks. Number three, that notice of their appointment to each presiding judge shall be the responsibility of the Tarrant County Elections Administrator. Number four, if neither the presiding nor the alternate presiding judge can serve in the election, and this inability to serve is discovered so late that it is impracticable to fill the vacancy in the normal manner, the Tarrant County Elections Administrator shall appoint the replacement judge. This comes from Section 32.007 of the Texas Election Code.
Would you like to move to approve?
I move to approve this order appointing presiding election judges.
Motion by Dr. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and approval of contract with Freedom Construction for construction services to provide transaction windows throughout the district in the amount of $164,695.65. Mrs. Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Heed has moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Greenhill?
That's Mr. Greenhill, yes.
Ms. Petty, go ahead.
So, this is for work that we are doing across the district for our Business Services Office. So each campus will be getting what we're calling "transaction windows." So each campus where the tuition fees and fines are paid by the student body has an environment there, and that we've felt for due to confidentiality and really noise reduction, it would be better to have these transaction windows up. We've tested this at the South Campus, and we're rolling it out to the rest of the district. We hope you'll approve it.
Any questions, comments? I'd remind any of you who are with us for the first time that this entire agenda—and it has been vetted by the board at a previous meeting with staff in attendance, so please know that we've had other conversations and questions, and we're not rubber-stamping.
Yeah, and included in that was the question of security, and that will provide the people behind there a certain level of security. Not necessarily bulletproof, but—
That's right. Absolutely. And we do provide you guys all what we call a board summary that has all the information, and we sort of do a who, one, what, where, why, in regard to the history and all that, which you get back at the governance meeting. So any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
We have—it's all presented to us on the computer and print documents as well, so lots of background information.
That's right, and I just try to touch on the details here at the board meeting.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Chambers Engineering for District Multipurpose Center Site Improvement in the amount of $102,012. Credit. Motion to approve.
Motion so moved.
Mr. Heed?
Second.
Dr. Morrison, seconded. Any comments, Ms. Petty? Explain the return of funds.
Yes, it's always nice to get funds back. This was actually due to a change in scope, so we reduced the scope on this assignment, and that's why we're getting the money back. We hope you'll approve it.
I bet we do.
We will deploy it for some other project, for sure.
Repurposing.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration and approval of contract with Freedom Construction for Northeast Campus Library Technology Arts Buildings Exterior Doors Replacement in the amount of $151,116. the amount of $151,116.30. Motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Mr. Heed?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Patrick. Ms. Petty?
Yes, this is the ongoing work that we're doing at the Northeast Campus to do replacement of doors, and this is specifically for our Library and Technology Arts Building, which was constructed in 1968 and 1988. And you think they might probably need some new doors there, because the useful life of these doors is because of the high usage mainly. So it really is a safety project that will be replacing exterior doors, the hardware, everything that's involved with it, including the controlled access.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Chambers Engineering for Northwest Campus Bus Round Paving Upgrades in the amount of $36,300. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded, Mr. Heed. Ms. Petty?
Yes, this is a deductive change order returning funds to our contingency.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration and approval of contract with Huckabee Associates Skinsler for Design Services for Northwest Campus Redevelopment Phase 1C in the amount of $592,480. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Dr. Morrison. Ms. Petty?
Well, this is slightly more exciting project than some of the others we've mentioned tonight, because it really does embrace our three goals and eight principles, and it's the ongoing work we're doing for the redevelopment at the Northwest Campus, which is very important. And this is the next phase of our full programming and conceptual design. After this, we'll be coming back to you with a full design contract. So we hope you approve this important work.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration and approval of contract with TD Industries to provide construction services for Southeast Campus Building Services Power Plant Backflow Modification in the amount of $122,109.77. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heed. Mrs. Petty?
Yes, this is one of our infrastructure projects that we've had anticipating to do for some time, and it really aligns with the work that we'll be doing at the Southeast Campus with the master planning there. It's a code compliance project. It will also provide redundancy when we need it, when we're going to be bringing the new building on there at that campus. So it's an important project, though it's not as exciting in some ways as the previous one. It's exciting to Dr. Coppola.
Y'all wore out the jokes at the governance committee. We're going to move right into, are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed? All right. Item number 13, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Novoo Construction and Technology Services for Trinity River Campus Exterior Code Blue Phones in the amount of $39,637.38. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Patrick?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heed. Mrs. Petty?
Yep, this is just another deductive change order that returns the unused owner contingency back, so.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are going to pull items 14 and 15 from the agenda. Do I need a motion?
Right. I don't think you need to, but rest assured, we'll be back in 30 days. We just have some minor adjustments that we need to make to those two items. We try to do our best to shore up things between governance last week and board meeting, and unfortunately, we just need to make some minor adjustments, and we'll bring it back to you in 30 days.
That'd be great.
An increase, I hope.
Yes, more money.
We're always looking for more money.
I would hope so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Pacico, item number 16, consideration and approval of contract of a three-month extension with Alucion to provide help desk services in an amount not to exceed $197,481. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heed. Mr. Pacico?
Yes, this is a three-month gap contract that we have with Alucion and their help desk services. This went through an RFP process, and so we just had a gap period. We've already awarded it to Alucion, so there's not going to be any disruption in service, and this is part of our Level 1 and Level 0 help desk services for the entire district.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 17, consideration and approval of contract with General Data Tech to purchase tetration technology in the amount of $564,393.60. Motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Mr. Heed? Seconded by Dr. Patrick.
Yes, this is, TCC has taken our security up to the next level by adopting a zero-trust architecture, security architecture program. This right here is, last year in April 2018, we had an InfoSec audit, and one of the things they identified was the adoption of tetration technology, which, as you remember, we discussed in our governance meeting, protects the hallways of the schools. So it's the network pathways, and this is what we're talking about right here.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. McLendon, is he here?
Good evening. This is our seventh month of our fiscal year. Our revenues, we will look at anything that's greater than 70%, and they are just as expected. It's 335 mil, which is 89.5%. If we look at our expenditures, we will look at anything that is, it's seven-twelfths is 58%. However, this number reflects, we also have encumbrances and other expenditures ahead, so our total expenditures are 199 with 20%, and so that's 58.8%. If we look at our investments, we've decreased, we are starting to start using the money, more than we have had it coming in. So our pools decreased by 5.6 mil. Short-term, we have no activity. We had one $10 million Federal Home Loan Bank that matured. Our total decrease of our portfolio is 14.7 mil, and our yield is 2.32%, and our WAM is weighted average amount of time of our investments is 353 days.
2.32? Good. Get up there. Hmm. Questions?
I'm going to make money here.
2.32?
I know it.
Thank you and your staff. All right, we are not going to have a closed session, but I do want to call your attention to some important dates coming up. Early voting starts on the 22nd, and the election is May the 4th. We will swear in the new board member on May the 16th at the regular board meeting, and the governance committee meeting has been changed to May 10th, which is a Friday instead of the usual Thursday. And then, of course, graduation in between all of that, so on May 11th at the Convention Center, two ceremonies. Thank you, we are adjourned.